Right on with your official town meeting, your public informational meeting on the articles that are going to be voted on at the annual meeting. Before we do that, I would like to say that we have Travis Bingham, our police chief, on Zoom. We have, I think, my department of waterworks, Tom. Mr. Banier, thank you, and Mr. Chaney, the zoning administrator is here. Anybody else who maybe you need it to... So pretty much what... I also want you to know that Representative Page is here. And Senator Russell Iglesias is going to be here after he finishes up over in Derby. And I'm going to ask Representative Page, did you want to open with your update? Did you like to do that?
If you'd like me to, I will.
I would love that.
Okay, you want to do it now?
Sure. Please feel free to use the mic.
How much time am I allocating?
You have all night.
Well, I'll be very brief. Well, thank you very much for having me here. And I'll just talk briefly about what's going on down at the State House. Governor Scott presented us, presented the legislature his budget for fiscal year 2025 in January. And the proposed budget was $8.6 billion, which included about $353 million in the transportation fund. In addition to that, there was $2.4 billion in the education fund and $2.3 billion in the general fund. And the priorities that he set forth were affordability, housing, and public safety. In 2023, the legislature approved a budget that significantly raised fees and taxes. And it came in with lower than normal revenues and at the end, federal funds in the form of FEMA and ARCA funding. Housing, especially in the urban areas, is at a crisis level for the unhoused. And public safety has been raised to an unprecedented level. And as we all know, property taxes are expected to increase on average to 20%. And this is a result of the new pupil weighing formula that has come into play. Health insurance premiums for teachers and staff has increased to 12% to 13%. School district costs are increasing by about $243 million. And then we have on top of that the Clean Heat Standard Act. And that has the potential to raise heating fuel costs. Renewable Energy Standard Act is expected to be passed after town meeting day. And it has the potential to cost rate payers another $1.3 billion in 2035. So that's briefly what I have to inform you. I can also tell you that last Friday, we passed the Budget Adjustment Bill, H839. Initially, for fiscal year 2024 for all funds, it came to $8.5 billion. And then with the committee of conference group that met, that consists of members from the Appropriations Committee from the House as well as the Senate, they passed the BAA, the budget adjustment. And it came to a total of $8.6 billion. That's $107 million more than what we had initially funded for 2024. And now we start work on the 2025 budget. Actually, we've already started work, but we're getting our numbers together and working on that. I don't know if there are any questions, but I'd be happy to answer whatever.
I don't have a question, but I think it would be lovely if you told all of your constituents what committee you were on and maybe just a little bit about that committee because it's such an important committee.
I serve on the Appropriations Committee. This is my second year on that. Items within my portfolio are the military section, Department of Vermont Health Access, also the Veterans Home in Bennington. And there's also a retired seniors group that does a lot of work with Meals on Wheels and that sort of thing. So those are my sections of appropriations.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for your representative?
You're welcome.
Senator Iglesias, step on up.
Thank you for rushing over here. I know you've been doing...
Oh, thank you. Well, thank you for all of you. And so I spent about, first of all, Senator Russ Iglesias and I represent Essex County, all of Essex County, four towns in Orleans, which are Newport City, Derby, Morgan, and Holland. And then two towns in Caledonia County, which is Linenville and Kirby. So 25 towns, and we tend to be the ones that everybody says that were forgotten. And that's one of the reasons why I'm pretty happy to be your senators because I will make sure that you're not forgotten at any time. I also spent about three hours trying to figure out what I was going to say. And it just, it's just, there's so much stuff going on. And really kind of really what I kind of wanted to talk about was just affordability in the state of Vermont because we just spent $10 billion of COVID money down in Montpelier. And they just think it's a great idea to raise taxes and raise taxes some more. We just can't afford that. They just, you know, we've seen the tax bill could possibly go up 20% to satisfy the school funding. We have inflation. We have, we have the highest interest rates, the high food costs, the high energy costs, the housing costs. It's just crazy. So, you know, some of you have heard me talk about this before, but I really do think about, in my district, we have so many of them, I think about the people that built Vermont. I think about the people that worked in the 50s and the 60s and the 70s and the 80s and the 90s and the 2000s. And they didn't make a lot of money. I mean, those are your farmers, your loggers, your people that work for town government, the people that kept the schools open, the people that plowed the streets, the people that just, the people that worked in the factories. They didn't make a lot of money. They didn't have 401Ks. They didn't have much. And but the government told them, hey, don't worry about it. We're going to make sure that you, we're going to make sure that you have something called Social Security and Medicare. And you'll be, and you'll be all taken care of. Meanwhile, these folks are trying to live on $1,550 a month. And that just doesn't cut it. They just don't, they can't do it. And then that's as long as they both stay alive. So I think about those people. I also think about the young families out there trying to get started, trying to buy a home, trying to, you know, they're not working high paid jobs, not yet. They're on a low part of the income. They're trying to raise families and the struggles that they're facing. So affordability in this state is very, very key. 75% of Vermonters are paycheck to paycheck. And again, I mean, I hate to be a one trick pony, but I think about the single moms and the single dads out there on one paycheck trying to make it happen, raising their kids, sending them to school, being the sole breadwinner and just trying to make it, just trying to make things meet. So it's very, very important again that we, that we keep Vermont affordable. And Montpelier, we talk a lot about climate change. And we spend about $700 million a year on climate change, fullheartedly thinking, some of them thinking that 640,000 people can make a difference in climate. Well, they can't. They absolutely positively can't. But we spend over 700 million, but we'll say 700 million. And I get it. We all want to leave this world in a better place. I want to leave it in a better place, and we do leave it in a better place. But, you know, we're not going to get away from that. We're going to keep on doing it. But my idea would be that, hey, why don't you take half of that? You guys can have 350 million. You're trying to do this in five years. Why don't you spread your plan out over 20 years? Show us your plan. But in the meanwhile, we're going to take that $350 million and jump it back into the middle of Vermont so that we can build our new schools, so we can build these places that can take care of the mental health that Vermonters are really struggling with right now. We can, we can make sure that we do something about trying to stop this thing called drug abuse that is actually just eating up our whole, a whole generation of people. And we can help to make sure that Vermont can stay affordable. We can pour some more money into the elderly. We can, we can do all sorts of things. But as of right now, the only way we can do that is to raise taxes. And again, it just gets to the point to where we're just, we just don't have any more way to go. We are, we are already, we are already too much. Last thing I want to talk about is education because education is front and foremost with you folks right now. You guys are seeing, you guys are seeing that probably it's going to be, if everything stayed the same, your tax bill went up 20%, we know that's unrealistic. It just, it just can't happen. That, that just can't happen. But, you know, some statistics, we've lost 16,000 kids in 12 years in our school system. We spent $25,000 per student, per kid right now in our, in our school system. I mean, for that right there, to be honest with you, you could go to UVM. And, and it would be fine if we were getting the results, but we're in the middle of the pack with that. And so we have, we have 80%. We have, national average is one in seven adults. There's one, there's seven adults, seven kids for every one adult in the classroom is national average. This state of Vermont has four, one in four. 80% of, of school budget is employees. And we just have to really have a, a really, really honest conversation at some point in time, getting everybody in the room and saying, how are we going to make this affordable? But we have to get back to education where we put kids first, no matter what. We just got to get kids first. The last thing I'm going to say, and I thank you everybody for the opportunity to go on here, is we have to vote. 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 And you have, then you have to hold your people accountable. You have to see what they're voting on. You have to make sure that they're representing the constituents that you sent them down there to do. But it shouldn't really be that if somebody's running for dog catcher, you should vote because it is so very, very important. There's other people in the whole world that wish they had the opportunity to just go out there and cast their ballot and then go home without the fear of somebody knocking their door down and causing them bodily harm. But thank you. Thank you very much. I want to thank the community for all that they do. And, and anybody that ever needs it, then just reach out to me. I'm very, very appreciative. Thank you.
Anybody want to ask anything? All right, gentlemen.
Justice.
Yes, sir.
Well, both of you, Dennis, because I already know the answer.
Yes.
We are so far in the hole. We keep adding taxes and taxes and taxes. And pretty quick, we're going to be the only state left in the country, there's only nine left, that tax Social Security.
Yeah.
And maybe five or less now that tax military retirement.
Yeah.
And I know the answer. That'll never stop because we keep needing more money. But that's, that's really bad.
We have to figure out how, we have to figure out, one of the others, two other statistics that we have, in the same last 12 years that we've lost 16,000 kids. In that same 12 year, we've lost 28,000 people between the ages of 45 and 65, 28,000. Those are our worker bees. Those are the people that show up every day and they go to work. They wouldn't miss a day of work if, if they were, if their left leg was cut off. They're just going to show up. And then during that same time period of that 12 years, we've had 48,000 people over the age of 65 move into our state. And so we're going in the opposite direction. We are, we are bringing it forward. We're getting it to an older society and we're, and we're losing our wage earners. And you want to wonder, where did the people go to fill the jobs? That's where they've gone to. They've decided that Vermont's gotten too expensive and they've moved out of state. And meanwhile, again, 16,000 kids we've lost in, in our school systems, but yet we keep on going higher and higher and higher in education. We've got to stop that. And I'll just say, because you brought it up, we have repeatedly, over and over and over, brought a bill to the Senate to, and this last time, we had, we had 17 senators, which is enough to pass that bill to not tax military retirement. And, and the chair, the chair of that, the taxes, I should know what it is.
At least at least.
Yeah, not, uh... No, not appropriation. The one that does the taxes, she won't, she won't bring it off the law. So you are absolutely positively correct.
Because Governor Scott had told me it was two down there that were blocking everything.
Yeah.
But sure. We've had Niles' request here to help the elderly. Widows out there making $800 a month are trying to survive. And yet, along that, we're still taxing.
If we don't do something, we're just going to keep on losing population. So, yeah, we got to keep on going. Anything else? I'm very reachable all the time. And I'm, as you can tell, I can talk, so.
Thank you, Senator. Thank you.
May I answer that question? Can I answer that question?
Yes, please. Are you going to give us the same answer?
Well, I'll, I'll say it a little differently than... Throughout the governor's term, he's raised that issue of, of not taxing retirement pensions. And I think it's a wonderful idea. I would actually benefit from it. But I think it's, as a former officer, I don't think, I don't think it would be good for me to receive it. I think it's best for our enlisted force that probably could use those additional benefits, more so than somebody like me as a retired officer. The governor, as I said, has each year has put that request in. This year, he did not. And the reason being is we just don't have the money. And to add on to what the senator said, I get a publication because, you know, from the Military Officers Association, and they rank all the states for the places to retire to. Vermont is not one of them. It's like 49th or 50th. But I do believe we need to do something to attract people to the area. People that, that are independent, people that have some resources, people that have, that won't be a drain on the state of Vermont, that they have families and can bring children. And that's why I would support something like you, you were asking.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Thank you, Senator. Yeah. Okay, so this is your informational time. We, if anybody has any questions about the budget, we have our department heads here. If there's anything specific, of course, our council, and our comptroller. Anybody? Okay, next. Also on tomorrow, when you go to vote, there are all the different articles, okay? So would you like me to just identify them or does anybody have any questions on them? Or are you... I'm going to let you read this. This is your time for your informational meetings. This is your town meeting. Does anybody have any questions on the various articles that are listed? There are 17 of them. Okay. That pays. I want to thank my department heads for having stood by here, and I'm doing this again. Okay, we are now calling the actual regular meetings, okay? The regular, Newport City Regular Council Meeting is called to order at?
7:47.
Thank you. 7:47.
6:47.
6:49.
6:49. Look, his last task.
My watch is 18:48.
18:48. Okay. Present at, present at the meeting are President John Wilson, Councilman Charbonneau, Councilman Bishan, Councilman Curtis, also President, Treasurer James Johnson, Comptroller-Baptorian, our department head, Mr. Banier, our zoning administrator, Mr. Chaney, and... And our Chief of Police, Mr. Bingham. And of course, our state senator and our representative, we've already heard. Next item on the agenda. Additions and deletions. President Wilson?
None.
Councilman Charbonneau?
None.
Councilman Bishan?
No.
Councilman Curtis?
No, thanks.
Treasurer Johnson?
No.
How's China? Okay. Next item on the agenda is to approve the minutes of February 26, 2024. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of February 26, 2024?
So...
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Comments? Or the discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Post a nay. Ayes have it, and the motion is carried.
I would never sign these.
Not suspiciously.
No, I was going to say, hey.
Yeah.
Just a copy of what we had last week. That's the page you got signed.
What do we do with that?
I would never sign these. I don't know what you're doing.
So it was something special just being today. What's this? Okay, the next item on the agenda is the Conflict of Interest Policy, anticipated vote. As we discussed at the last meeting, we have a current policy in place. And the council voted to have our attorneys update the policy. We discussed changes at the last meeting. The council members asked that they be afforded some time, more time to read it, and that it be brought forward for this, this council meeting for an agenda item. There is one further change on this. Council members, you have the updated Conflict of Interest policy. Do you have yours? And so if you go down to A, and then if you go down to 3, the paragraph that begins A quote, "Conflict of Interest," end quote, all that was done there was to make it more understandable. So the attorneys reworked the wording on that, not the intent. And thank you, Councilman Clark, for bringing that to everyone's attention. So it just says, "A quote, 'Conflict of Interest,' end quote, 'does not arise in the case of votes or decisions on matters in which the public official has no greater or personal or financial interest in the outcome than that of other persons generally affected by the decision, such as the establishment of the tax rate.'" Can I have a motion to approve the Conflict of Interest policy for the city of Newport? I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
The motion and second. Comments? Discussion?
Yes. Well, it says in A1, it described the business associate or organization of which a public officer is an officer, member, or volunteer owner. Why do we have volunteer? He doesn't, a volunteer wouldn't have financial interest or anything really for a volunteer.
Well, sometimes volunteers do have benefits and things that are unafforded by the company. But remember, there's always, in this conflict of the interests, we also have that one paragraph that says, if there's a question, that we, everyone can now discuss it and find a resolution.
Yeah, I was just wondering because even the Secretary of State noted that in communities, people often wear two or three hats. And, you know, some of those may be a volunteer or an employee, an employee is paid. But, you know, I just think volunteer is really narrowing it down.
Well, yeah, but also remember that sometimes any volunteers do get reimbursed for expenses. Sometimes that each organization is different. So we're only concerned about what's pretty much going to be extremely material. And we'll discuss that if there is an issue and find some type of resolution. Good? Okay. Motion and any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Post a nay?
Aye.
Ayes have it, and the motion is carried.
Madam, madam mayor, it was three to one vote with Councilmember Charbonneau voting nay. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Do we have the one for me this time?
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda are water and sewer rates discussion, anticipated vote. I would like at this point to say that we are still working on, in this area, and we are working on the numbers. And I would ask at this point that we go into discussion and, on information that we've received from the treasurer and move it. And I'm not going to make a motion yet. I just want to start the discussion so that we do not vote on this today because we still have a lot of work to do. We will have to vote on it before the certain deadline, but I think we still have much more work that we need to do. So our treasurer has provided us with a recommendation, not a recommendation, I apologize, an option, okay? An option for the city council and the city manager's office to consider. And he's worked really hard going through these numbers because this is not an easy task. And I mean that sincerely. This is not an easy task. So, Mr. Treasurer, do you want to kind of sum up?
Yeah.
And do you want this to be...
So the mayor said it's not an easy task. I spent the better part of last week working on this. And as you said, it's not a recommendation. It's an, it's an option for the council and mayor to consider. As I mentioned last week, one of the options was to raise the flat rates on everything. So I averaged the last five years in both the water and sewer funds. The sewer fund had an average loss of around, it's off, $377,000 a year, or $94,450 a quarter. The water fund had an average loss of $43,100 per year. So you can see which one is the culprit here, or $10,775 a quarter. If you combine those, the average loss a year is over $420,000 a year. So basically what, I looked at all this, and the option, the water fund, to raise all the fix rates by 6%, okay? That would increase revenue approximately $5,275 per quarter. And on top of that, raising the meters rate by 5% would increase your revenue by $5,423. And that comes to about $10,000. And that comes to about ten thousand, seven-hundred dollars. Or about seventy-five dollars, and six dollars off on that one. The sewer fund, a different story. Sewer fund, we'd have to, in my estimation, would have to raise the rates fifty-three percent. And that would increase the revenue to sixty-eight thousand, five-hundred dollars per quarter. On top of that, the metered rates would have to be raised by fifteen percent. And that would increase the revenue approximately twenty-five thousand dollars per quarter. And the total increase in revenue on the sewer fund, with the fixed rate and the metered rates combined, would be about three-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars, for about two thousand dollars off on that. Like the mayor said, it's not easy, it's not a great solution, but at this point, it's looking like it's the only one. And I will add this. When that water tower is built, the city's already approved to borrow up to five million dollars on that. If the city has to borrow, I took a figure of three million dollars. That's going to add a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars a year expense for the water fund. That's not including interest. So I calculate that in order to make, pay for that increase, the water fund is going to have to be almost double. The rates. Sad, but true.
Any questions? So, um, can I have a motion to move this to the next meeting?
Is there time for public comment, or not?
Move this to the, when's the next, the eighteenth? Move this to the eighteenth. Do I have a motion?
So.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second.
Um, so, I attended a meeting.
I'm sorry, could you, sure. Jennifer? And everybody speak for me, don't, yeah.
So Jennifer Bearden, resident of Newport, Vermont. So I attended the meeting, I think it happened during COVID, it was a virtual meeting, where they were making the decision as to whether or not they were going to do this water tower. And I actually think they voted on it that night. And at that time, residents were told that it would be a ten-dollar-per-quarter charge in order to fund the water tower, period. That was it. Now I'm hearing that the water fund's going to double. And I would just like to know what's happened. Why is the story so different? And I'm not hearing any information about that. So I'd like information. Thank you.
Thank you, any comments? Any other comments? Yes, sir?
I just have one. I would like copies to be provided of what was presented tonight, so that each one of us can look at it and sort of play with it ourselves, and come back with suggestions.
Thank you for your comment. Yes.
I've come doing this, the next meeting, when we have five candidates, they don't have any access to this. You put it on the next meeting, maybe out of back it off a month, so at least they've got, know what the heck they're.
Here's the reason why. So that we can get them up to speed during the big discussions, there's no vote.
Long as there's no vote.
Yeah, so that we can, we need to get them up to speed. So, yeah, thank you. Okay. I have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Post say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion is carried. Next item on the agenda is to set the next meeting, the regularly scheduled council meeting for March eighteen, twenty-twenty-four. Thank you, Rebecca, for telling me that, when I could have just looked down and seen the tape. May I?
New old business?
What?
New and old business.
I'm not there yet. But thank you. May I? May I have a motion to set the next regularly scheduled council meeting for March eighteen, twenty-twenty-four? I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion is carried. Next item on the agenda is new business. President Wilson?
Oh, no.
Councilman Charbonneau?
No, thank you.
Councilman Bishan?
No, thank you.
Councilman Curtis?
No thanks.
Treasurer Johnson?
Yeah, I have one thing. I need approval for a tobacco license for the Family Dollar store next door, the renewal.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the Family Dollar stores, comment? License, I'm sorry.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion is carried. I have some new business. I would just like to announce that I have contacted the state on the issue with Casella, and I am going to be discussing the issue as well on a TV show for campaign for Vermont with some residents, actually. And we, hopefully, will have better answers, and I'll bring you up to speed. Okay? Right now, I just started to place the polls to find out what is actually going on. And then, the other thing I would like to announce is that our new city manager, and our Senator Russ Ingles, and myself, are going to be having a community forum on May thirteen, at five-thirty, in the gym, where the Vermont State Treasurer is coming, and he's going to be speaking about financing and housing and issues here. And council members will be there, too.
What date is that?
Yeah, it'll be May thirteen, twenty-twenty-four, at five-thirty. And that was requested, the date and time was requested by the treasurer. So we're going to get more people from the state down here, and have other people here looking forward to hearing what he has to say, what the treasurer has to say about the housing issue and the retirement issues, and the plans that, the retirement plans that the state can work with us on. Okay, next item on the agenda is old business. President Wilson?
None.
Councilman Charbonneau?
None.
Councilman Bishan?
No, thank you.
Councilman Curtis?
No, thanks.
Treasurer Johnson? Counselor Turner? Well, I have some. I would, I would like to speak to President Wilson's retirement. He is retiring as Newport City's president of the council and a council member. President Wilson's last day will be tomorrow. When you hopeful candidates thereafter will be joining the council. President Wilson has surely had a colorful tone. He's also been an amazing tenement. Mayors and council members are only as good as their team effort, and President Wilson has gone above and beyond for the citizens of Newport. We heard President Wilson's speech last meeting, with over twenty years, twenty-two, I just like to be corrective, I don't, twenty-two years of dedication to our city. There are very few words to describe his patience, his tolerance, his leadership, and his empathy in driving the successes of this council and the mayors that he's actually served with. I actually take license in saying that each of our council members and our fellow elected officials and city officials and employees thank President Wilson for his service. The city has relied upon President Wilson's institutional knowledge over the years. This is an asset that cannot be replaced. And on a personal note, I would like to thank you most of all for being my friend. However, you know, get out of here, and I have nothing to do with it. Can you start? You got a letter, and I didn't open it. But I was so tempted. Why don't you open it, tell them who it's from?
It's not the Office of the Governor. It's not my income tax return, I better get it. I want to get it before the state decides to take some more of that out. I don't want to move, no.
Yes, I would. Office of the Governor, the state of Vermont, John Wilson. Dear John, congratulations on your retirement after twenty-two years of dedicated service to the Newport City Council. I would also like to thank you for your years of service in the U.S. Army, including fighting bravely in Vietnam. Your decades of military and public service show how much you care for your fellow community members, state, and country. Whether in your role as council president or member, to your supportive veterans throughout your life, your leadership has helped make Newport an even stronger community to call home. Thank you for your commitment to the city of Newport. Your work has not gone unnoticed and serves as an example for others to follow. Your wealth of knowledge and experience will be sorely missed for the Newport community. I join your family, friends, and colleagues in celebrating your achievements and recognizing your contributions to your community. I hope you enjoy a happy and healthy retirement. Sincerely, Philip B. Scott, Governor. Okay, so when that's done. One more thing. Two more, two more things. On behalf of our council, we have something that we would like to dedicate to you, and I have asked Councilman Bishan to do the.
We have this beautiful plaque in dedication. Thank you.
And we're still not done. Okay, the comptroller has something that she'd like to not bring in. She'd like us to go out? She would like us to.
You've got one more item.
I do?
Two items on your agenda.
Oh, before that, scratch it.
But when they do it during the meeting, we're going to have something out in the hallway afterwards.
Right, okay.
People want to hang around.
Okay, so I did. Oh, we're going to do that first? I'm, you're absolutely right. Comments by the public? We're going to be opening the board of pub, public comment for each agenda item. Members of the audience are reminded that members of the press are present, and that these proceedings are being recorded for current and future broadcast over the city's cable television channels. Members of the audience are further reminded that Newport City Council meetings are for the purpose of allowing council members to conduct city business. City council meetings are the only time the city council discusses, deliberates, and decides upon city matters. City council meetings are held in public to promote transparency and accountability in government, but are distinct from public hearings or town meetings, and that they are not meetings of the public. Members of the public shall be afforded reasonable opportunity to express opinions about matters considered by the city council to conduct orderly and efficient meetings. I kindly request the public's cooperation and compliance with the public's guidelines when participating in the meeting. And I thank you. Ms. Gribb? And please speak through the mayor. Any questions this way?
My name is Laurie Gribb. I'm a resident of Newport City, and for the record, I am a candidate for city council. And I make these comments as a resident of the city. As we vote tomorrow, I would simply ask the public to take a look at the candidates who are running for their desire to serve the city and community, and for the truth of their character, and not the accusations being thrown about in the paper and on social media. As we look to a new city council, no matter who is elected, that the community at large will allow the mayor and the Board of Aldermen, thus the city council, to be allowed to do their job. It is time for us to rise above.
Thank you for your comment. Thank you. Counselor?
Uh, we're going to gather in the hallway after they adjourn the meeting.
Before we do that. Here we go. There is important people coming up now. You remember these two gentlemen, right?
Yeah.
There's not enough room for two.
Yeah, it's just a power play.
Well, thank you, Mayor. And Senator Ingles and I are here this evening to celebrate John Wilson's dedication to public service. And here are just a few of those areas of accomplishment. First and foremost is his love and dedication to his family, especially his wife Janice and daughter Jennifer. Second is his dedication to his country through his service in the army, where that work was supporting, advising, and protecting the officers that he served under, but more importantly, the soldiers under his command. And finally, the dedication that John has had for twenty-two years for his city and hometown of Newport. And I'm certain that his work will continue for Newport, and also for all of our veterans in our area. And with these accomplishments, Senator Ingles and I have a couple of certifications for you that perhaps Mayor and the others would like to participate in. So, we can give that one first. Do whatever you want. You can do it.
Vermont Public Service Award. This certificate is awarded to John Wilson in recognition of twenty-two years of service to Newport City, awarded on Thursday, February twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-four.
One goes to our city.
Okay, so do we read them too?
No, you just, it's the same one.
Okay, same one, okay. So do you want to do the second one? Yep, we'll do the second one, I'll have you read it.
Okay. And the second one is a concurrent House Resolution, HCR one sixty-one. The House Concurrent Resolution Honoring Newport City Council Chair John Wilson for His National and Municipal Public Service, offered by Representatives Page of Newport City, Hango of Berkshire, Higley of Lowell, Labor of Morgan, Marquardt of Coventry, and Smith of Derby, and offered by Senator Ingles and Starr. Whereas John Wilson was born and raised in Rock Island, Quebec, and he and his wife Janice Wilson immigrated to Vermont as young adults, and whereas in nineteen sixty-eight, the U.S. Army drafted John Wilson, and although he could have surrendered his green card and returned to Canada, his patriotic desire to become an American citizen led him to serve his new country. And whereas, after completion of basic training, John Wilson was deployed to Vietnam, where he encountered combat. And whereas in nineteen eighty-three, during his military service, John Wilson was proud to take the oath as a U.S. citizen. And whereas John Wilson's Vietnam service began a twenty-eight-year U.S. Army career that took him and his family around the world. And in nineteen ninety-eight, he was honorably discharged from military service as an operations sergeant major. And whereas in two thousand and one, John Wilson won a seat on the Newport City Council, on which he served until twenty eighteen, and then again from twenty twenty until twenty twenty-four. And whereas. And whereas John Wilson's municipal legislative colleagues respected his life experience, and for 15 years, he chaired the Newport City Council. And whereas in 2018, the Northland Journal recognized John and Janice Wilson, honoring their role in advising U.S. military veterans. And whereas after over two decades of leadership and conscientious work as a member of the Newport City Council, John Wilson has decided not to stand for reelection in 2024. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Senate and the House of Representatives that the General Assembly honors Newport City Council Chair John Wilson for his national and municipal public service, and be it further resolved that the Secretary of State be directed to send a copy of this resolution to John Wilson and to the Newport City Clerk. And it's signed by Jill Crowinsky, the Speaker of the House, David Zuckerman, President of the Senate, who is our Lieutenant Governor, and our House Clerk, Betsy Ann Ross.
Okay, well, get around so you guys can see him. Yeah, Janice? Yes, as well, if you, if you have one as well. So you want it right here?
Okay, so John, this is yours. This is from the Secretary of State.
Yes, congratulations.
And Janice, this is for you as well.
And then this is for, this is the resolution that we just read. That's quite an honor to have one of those right there. And it was very, very easily agreed to that they should do that. And we're very honored to be here on your behalf. Thank you very much. Thank you for your service very much. We appreciate it greatly.
Thank you, John.
Well, I need some of that too. Peter, perfect. Awesome. So congratulations.
You did pretty good. Well, importantly, you got two, two rolls.
Hey, John, did you play your cards right? We'll do this again next week? No.
Where's Rebecca?
Yeah, okay, good. We're just going to sit here. Because Rebecca's coming here next. And whenever happens, please do not let me forget to ask for a motion to adjourn after we do. Or else we're going to be here a waffly long. Okay, there's Becky. Come on in. Ready? Everybody out. No, we're not turning. Everybody out.
Is it executive session?
Executive session outside. Can we get, can we get your family? We need their wife and wife and son.
You have to cut into it to see. You have to cut into it to see. Oh, wow, wow, wow. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Janice, can you look at the way?
Try to smile, look at the camera, add a smile. That's way better. Come on, John, try to smile. Come on, you have a two days' work of Tootsie Rolls waiting for you. Okay, looks awesome. Good shot.
And 30 years in military, this is my smile.
I haven't been smiling a little bit.
They stopped smiling for pictures.
Oh, this one's kind of funny. It's when you take a flash picture.